Find out the information of when your meetings are going to be and where they're going to be in the time.
Okay, so those are publicly available on our website.
On your website, and I could not find it, so I don't think it's totally clear.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay.
So you have found the Dresden meeting, which is the middle school.
That's what I wanted.
All right, in that case, go ahead and let us know.
It wasn't easy.
Let us know what is on, do you have, do you have a specific question or?
No, 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 we're just here out of interest.
Okay, all right, well, that is good to know, welcome. That is how I started, so you are warned.
Well, it would be nice if you had an agenda in a printout form when, or is there one?
There's none of those are printout because it is, yeah, typically folks do it on the computer, but that is a good thing to know, so.
It would be nice, thank you.
And just to add, the Hanover listserv has all of the meetings. Jan, the superintendent's assistant puts into the Hanover listserv notices of policy meetings coming up. The Hanover School Board meeting coming up, the Dresden meeting, I don't know if you're on the Hanover listserv.
If not, okay.
And a lot of us, like sort of the reach out methods where the parents and all the emails that we have through the schools get these on a regular basis.
Right.
But we have no formal way of reaching out to the community, we don't have the town's email with serve or anything like that. So if you wish to be, if you yourself want to get noticed, if you give me your information, I can have you added to some sort of listserv. Question from a board member, Garrett.
So just to work clear though, if you go to the S A U calendar, school calendar.
Right.
All day, so like right here, this is the S A, so this is the entire calendar for the school year, so here is. All right, skip through it, but here is. Sorry, I went to, this was last week, but I just turned it up before my finger hit it, but here's all the meetings. So just do S A U seventy school calendar. Then right here, so September twenty third, four chairs mean we just had special ever school meeting from six fifty to seven oh five, and then the Dresden board meeting from seven to eight.
Okay, I, I, right, I was looking at the beginning of September and I couldn't find anything, but maybe it hadn't been posted.
So they are posted one week beforehand.
Right, and they go over the listservs and all.
Yeah, so they, the meetings are established months in advance, but we don't know the agenda until one week prior, based on whatever's coming up down the pipeline. Lisa, then let's move on.
Yeah, I, I do think it would be helpful if it was more readily available on the website, like the yearly calendar. Um, so just like we know when we meet, but most people don't, and sometimes a week in advance isn't enough to plan. So just, it's not easily found, the yearly calendar, so without the agendas, just, yeah.
Point taken. Right, thank you very much for your comment. Any other questions from members of the public? I'd seen none, we will move right along to reports, we'll start with the high school council representative, Ian, what's going on in this building?
Well, the past few weeks, council has been discussing the new belt to bell cell phone policy. And there are multiple concerns within students about the cell phone policy creating antagonistic relationship between the teacher and student. There are also concerns about the culture of Hanover changing. People are worried that the students will leave the school premises to be on their phones and that will affect the bureaucracy of the school. And uh, she wants to add onto anything.
Dodging that.
So can I ask you then, what sort of, have these been, have events actually occurred that are causing concern, or is it more theoretical at this point?
More theoretical, I don't think, I don't think the belt developed that has been enforced yet.
I see, board member shaking her head.
No, I'm not, I'm not, it hasn't been.
Okay, Robin, Karen, China.
Well, the cell phone policy went into effect last year in the high schools. So cell phones were not allowed in any of the classrooms and that's continued this year. And what has been your feedback about that?
Well, cell phones are still present in the school buildings and during the school day, students still use them in the hallways and during lunch.
And, and so I'll, I'll, thank you for letting us know, and I'll point out that the actual. Policy committee interpretation of the belt to bell regulation is still being worked on. Cause it's, it gets, it's gonna go very granular, because we need to follow state guidance while also adhering to our own thoughts. And that is gonna take some time, but policy is still working on that, and I believe we have heard from some members from other students who will be joining us at policy tomorrow morning. So I'll work around for that with my policy chair hat on and.
Bless you.
We are such a polite board. Ian, anything else to report?
I think that's about it, if, I don't know if you wanna add on.
Any questions for Ian from board members or the public?
Yeah, I think, I'm just curious in general, um, I know like we, the phone thing I understand is big all over the state. I'm curious if there's any other topics that have been discussed at the beginning of the school year, any other things going on that have impacted the students of Hanover?
Well, there is being motion by Mr. Murphy, he wants a pledge motion, Hanover High pledge motion. And I think we're gonna discuss that soon.
Can you say pledge?
I think it's the Hanover High pledge, I think.
Looking at Julie kind of.
Hi Julie. Um, he would like to have, and you know, other people who are supportive of it, a pledge that's not, you know. United States of America, which we do each day, but how we're gonna make the Hanover High School, what do we all believe in common? I don't know where it'll go, I don't know if it'll go far, but it's been brought up.
We look forward to hearing on that. Any other questions or comments for Ian? Seeing none, thank you very much, Jan. Moving along to the R M S principals report, and this, it looks like you may have a guest or so here.
So, uh, just wanted to, so I'd like to introduce, take opportunity to introduce you all, Brandon Hannett, who is our athletic co-curricular director. New member of our team, right? We're bringing middle school sports to R M S for the first time in our school's history, it's not an easy task, but he's. Taking it on and is in the process, I'll let you update what you're working on.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for having me here tonight, um, basically what we're doing right now is we're throwing together the winter sports. We're making sure that we're having, uh, basketball season is going off, um, and there's minimal interruption. Um, as we transition from Parks and Rec handling the winter sports over to, uh, Richmond Middle School handling them. Uh, first, spring sports, we're not sure exactly what we're gonna be offering yet, we're gonna be making sure that we're putting a committee together with members of the public. Members of the, um, of, of the faculty at Richmond Middle School, and then making sure that we're having some student input too. To make sure that we get the right sports that are gonna be, um, that the community wants out of the school. Um, so we're in the process of doing that, we're also in the process of developing a handbook, um, for students, um, to be following. Um, to kind of guide us along in as we make our, um, as we develop these programs, so.
And Brandon, it's my understanding of we'll be able to kind of a somewhat formal presentation then for the October meeting.
Yeah, and so in October, that'll, we'll be able to have a better idea of where we're at, um, with athletics, where we get more and more input, um, by that point, yeah.
Thanks much for coming, noting that we're still working on things, Michael.
So I'm very much agree, welcome aboard, glad you've taken this up since you opened the door on basketball. I already have children who play basketball.
Yeah.
Um, outside of, in the driveway, um, where occasionally the ball ends up at a culvert. Is that, are, once it comes to a middle school program, will students from crossroads still be able to participate in?
So what, yes, they will if they are Hanover or Norwich residents.
Okay.
So if they're from, if they're from other communities, they'll have to talk to their community about develop, either developing a program or joining their program.
Great, so, yes, and that'd be the same thing for homeschooling.
Yes, for homeschool students as well.
Yeah, thank you.
So acknowledging, so we're here on it, um, transportation, looking like if the conversations are going okay.
As far as bus thing goes to game plan is that there will be buses transporting kids to games.
Yeah, and so, so if I can interpret your question, or so, so far, there's been no concerns that are apparent to you of the feasibility of that.
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Brandon at this early juncture, please, so.
I apologize if I missed this, but are you looking for people to be on the committee, or are you like from the public?
So we've already reached out, yeah, and we've been, we're gonna be discussing that this week and reaching out to those individuals that said that were interested by the end of the week.
And Brandon, I did take a question from a member of the public.
Yeah.
Is that meeting anticipated to be during business hours or outside of business hours?
As far as school hours.
Yeah, I think for people like doing like the nine to five job, like how realistic is it to be on this committee?
The plan right now would be to have it be after school so that we can have faculty and students more easily able to be on that as well.
Okay. Great, any other questions for Brandon, otherwise we'll see you next month. Okay, thank you so much for coming, Brandon, we appreciate everything you're doing.
Well, other questions for me, uh, my reports in assembly. I'm excited about the start that we have to the school year. We are seven days in with having our new interim associate principal, uh, Sheldon Boe in our building, and the energy is incredible. Yeah, I'm excited to collaborate, I'm excited for the work that we're gonna do together as we juggle many things. I am juggling still, um, yeah.
Um, I would love to have some kind of plan where it's possible for every interested school board member to. Be taken around the school for, you know, like a morning or the afternoon by a student, is that something? That you can make happen?
If it works for the purview of your board, I'd welcome any of you in to spend some time at our school. Okay, yeah, that's part of your practice, it's okay.
Are you proposing a board meeting involving a tour, or are you proposing that you yourself would like a tour?
I would really, I've been in the building, but I would really love a more formal sort of, I will match you up with a student who that'll carry around and extend that.
So you gotta feel what it's like to be in classes, the routine of the day.
I personally don't need it at Hanover High School.
Well, and I remember with the, with the previous chair in a previous administration that this, a similar idea had been banaged by, I think that was more in terms of what are the needs of the schools in terms of. The physical plant and things like that, and that didn't pan out, but, um, if it was, if this was a full formal thing, then that would have to have members of the public come on too.
No, I don't, I don't want it to be that complicated.
Yeah, so I think if any board member wants to reach out to, welcome to do so, if I'm interpreting you correctly.
Yes, that'd be wonderful.
And this, for those who don't know, you wanna walk us through what peak days?
Uh, so for a long time, probably ten years, we've done a kind of, uh. An activity to bring together our Norwich and Hanover students in seventh grade, um, and that, uh, probably. What initially started a store spawn like afternoon involved to be hiking whole fledgeses. Last year or the year before, the sixth grade, uh, spent their afternoon that same day, uh, doing a walk. And when we were reflecting at the end of last school year, our eighth grade team, uh, made the decision to also do a hike and they did cardigan. So it was really nice to have the whole school involved in activities where they had the opportunity to kind of set aside academics and build relationships. Uh, it was wonderful to have an eighth grade, uh, teacher come back to the building and share some of the things that she'd learned about a student who's new to our building. Uh, through that walking up the hill together, which is exactly what we want, if we're gonna foster that relationship that can support academic growth throughout the year. So this, my perspective, a perfect way to get to know each other and, and setting up the classroom.
Any questions for Vanessa from board members or the public? Yeah.
One, I love the idea of everybody having that moment in time, uh, and I am, I love hiking, I know not everybody loves hiking. How you accommodate and like solve for the problem of potentially not everybody being on the same.
Certainly not everybody has that interest to trek up a hill, um, and at both the, uh, seventh grade and the eighth grade. There were, uh, groups of adults that chose to stay at the bottom and did activities with, maybe students started and got the first five minutes and then said, no, thank you, and they walked back. We have a student at R M S with, uh, pretty physical differences, and that student, our adaptive E teacher, another student. And I, we did a little walk along the road using a bicycle, that's part of the adaptive E program, so that was a wonderful way for that student to be on the bus, be with peers. Even though getting up a mountain wasn't something that Missy Rodriguez and I were comfortable helping him do. But what we've also talked about what that could look like in future as a way to incorporate, uh, more of our students that have physical challenges. It'll be enough, adapted a little bit, we can figure it out.
Any other questions? See, and Julie. Are things happening in this building?
If some of you don't feel like Deb has visited enough for everyone, we would welcome you. We have a thing called a flamingo form, so just let me know when you wanna come. The student has to get permission from their parent that you're shadowing, and then they have to get the form signed by the teacher so they're aware that you're coming. Whoever it is, it could be their cousin from somewhere else, um, and then you're welcome to come on in, so we can do that. I didn't put the Spanish exchanges here, they're, they've come and gone. For those of you who, the French exchange is coming in October. So the, so we restarting a French exchange, they're gonna be here in October, so it was amazing, I hosted a, a teacher, and it was really. The kids had an amazing time, twenty students from Spain came and it was, we're all exhausted, uh, but it was really lots of tears on the way out. Um, and then naturalization ceremony for, we had a few who come. Um, we added a second part to it this year, which I wrote about in here with the ninth and tenth graders having a panel. Um, I think every time we do it from now on, we'll probably do the same thing, so we'll have to rotate who's on the panel, so if you have. People in this community that would be good for that, let me know, and then I'll start next month, uh, for those who are used to the reports that have just reports for different departments. I'll start that next month. Questions?
Any questions for Julie from anyone, or members of the public, Kelly?
Just the overall enrollment, was that, I actually couldn't remember, was that what we expected, are we up there?
Um, we expected it to go up. And I would have to look back to see, we expect it to go up at least a class worth, like it's like sixteen to twenty, and I think we're kind of, we were in the. Sixties last year, so it's probably a little higher than we thought, but I have to double check those numbers. But yeah, thanks.
Any other questions?
Can, can my child be my flamingo?
Oh, she has to agree to say that.
Thank you, Julie. Been running along the internet.
Moving right along the internet upgrades, uh, Brian, and, um, so I think Brian, you've been to both Mary Cross and Ray recently. So we've had some similar conversations already, so let's see if, uh, we can make this efficient up a bright time as well. Brian, wanna walk us through what's going on?
Uh, sure, so I think as, as Ben said, um, I've talked to a lot of you about this, we, um, belt belt passed midsummer. As part of that, we realized we hadn't really done a purge of, you know, all of our users that had guests and had that by various people, so we said, why don't we bring it down? And then we'll reintroduce the staff to their V Y O D network. We turned off self-registration for obvious reasons, because if you can self-register them, you can get on during the day. Uh, well, we brought it down, um, last year I had talked to the superintendent and asked whether we needed to provide, um, services during non-school hours, and he had said no. So we brought it down at three, that caused some consternation across groups of people, um, so we've been talking about it since then, um. And we had a fairly severe, um, password breach on two fronts that I can get into the details if people want, so there was an urgency that kicked was probably. Um, so we have engaged, uh, a company to help us design a secure network, and we have engaged a company to provide us with the, um, product that we need to do that. The high school was able to find some money to fund it for this year, very big thank you to them. And, uh, so we have signed those contracts and we are starting that process, we met with them for the first time today. And our super rough guess is that sometime around Christmas or the beginning of the new year is when the systems will come back up, and I can come and present that to various people about what that will look like.
Tim, you saying, so what is gonna change in December with these timelines, just to make it clear?
Uh, we will have wifi available, uh, after three, from three P M to eight A M. Okay, I think that's what the big concern was.
And would that be available, is that intended for students and faculty, is that intended for the public attending sports games, or was it entire audience?
The, um, the capabilities that we've been discussing could cover all of that, so we are going to start talking to people about what does that look like? McDonald's S, you just connect it as a McDonald's S stores, you know, you'd have to go to the hospital, you have to enter your credential, your name, so we know who's doing it. I assume no matter what, we will choose a document that sort of says you will not do illegal things on this, sort of checkbox. But we could discuss that, the way people want that to look like. It's about, um, it's gonna probably mean about, um, forty thousand dollars a year.
You said four, forty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Invited across the four schools.
Forty thousand in total or forty thousand per school?
In total.
I'm, I'm hopping the floor, any other questions from board members on this?
I don't need to open a can of worms, but having lived in a very rural place with bad reception with a twenty-four hour wifi of a tiny little local library. Um, and knowing the concerns of that unmonitored thing, knowing that wifi is not great here, I think just wanting to extra emphasize the concerns of what it means to have. The only place with reliable, really good internet being a school property, I know that in this, in my personal experience, it was a tiny public library and unfortunately, um. Yeah, it became a place of substance misuse, um, because of the unmonitored nature of twenty-four hour internet. Um, and so I just think the internet around here is not great, and so if it becomes known that the high school always had. Twenty-four hour top notch internet, what happened that one in the morning, who uses this as a meeting place, what are the things that happen, so just.
Julie, can you repeat that?
That was the situation last year, so, right, like it's different this year than last year, people have internet at the high school last year, so I don't know if they brought all the drug. It doesn't seem that way.
Clarification, when you say that was the situation last year, you mean we had internet last year, right, not like they were.
Not they were on drugs.
Yeah, I think some of us were a little confused, is that, this is a big update that kinda came around.
Yeah, what's, you had to, you had to register though, so you had to, you had to know how to get yourself on it, and honestly, even people that were coming into the building that wanted to get on it, didn't necessarily know how to. The self-registration component last year, when the, and for the last three years, was, was a little bit of a hindrance to just anybody hopping on, because you had to know the protocol or you really couldn't get on.
Okay, that's helpful, I'm just thinking like public libraries, just open wifi.
Right, right.
It's different.
Layers.
Garrett.
So for Brian's help here, I guess, like, how should we as a board make sure that, are we just gonna leave this to Julie or the superintendents and whatnot to make the decision? This far as what this network's gonna do, was it gonna be the board saying do it like it was last year, and with that same situation as you just said, or? Like who's gonna make this decision and do we care?
So I would say, Brian, so you're suggesting a for-school approach rather than a high school specific approach, if I'm hearing you correctly, right? So to me, that sounds like an S A U conversation.
Just to give Brian direction, right, so that in December, he's not sitting here saying, well, I gave you guys open network, and all of a sudden, all of us are like, why did you do that? Like last year. Right, so I think we need to maybe.
Now, that's a great, it's a great call up, um, I would initially mention that this could be a conversation at the school's admin leadership committee to kind of figure out what this means, especially if we're talking all four schools rather than just the high school. But I would, I personally would defer to our superintendent to give some initial insights into this, and where the board would become weeded. Is anyone disagree with that concept? Like, is Brian, anything else you need to share with us? And thank you, we appreciate, while he's still here, anyone have any computer issues, Michael, you have a new computer?
In all seriousness, that's, that's, everyone's on the pension.
I would just say, we discussed this at the Norwich School Board, and one of the things that we talked about was. Hey, how do we fix this for the whole system, so we can do it once, do it right, and the board, very much appreciate the time and work to get to that.
Absolutely.
Place and the money, um, but I think one of the things I've appreciated about your work is that you're looking out over the horizon saying. Where does the school district need, where are our risks, and I want you to go back to work on that, just figuring out the state of the internet every day. So just really appreciative that you got through this kind of. You got through this kind of wild few weeks and by the holiday time you feel like you have a plan for the whole system.
And we'll run along to the budget guidelines. And I have attended the budget committee meetings this year. It's been great seeing everyone work so hard on this. So thank you to all the members of the committee and all the members of the administration that are coming to those meetings deeply appreciated. Neil, you want to walk us through our current progress with the budget guidelines for Dresden?
Uh yeah, so as Ben noted, we have had two budget committee meetings so far in this and we have included in the pack of this evening, a draft of where we currently stand on the budget guidelines. Um recognizing that there are some significant um headwinds, I think, on both sides of the river, um especially facing property tax owners. Um the, you know, inclusive of uh recent um reassessments in Norwich, a pending reassessment, I believe in Hanover. Um uh. Then some board members will probably, you know.
It it's complicated, but we don't know the tax rate yet.
And then as all of you probably will make fun of me once again, telling some uh education funding uncertainty in the state of Vermont. Although I believe my Hanover colleagues probably are starting to experience things similar on this side of the river. So welcome to the party. We are still waiting on some, some numbers in the quick model to really um flesh out what the final recommendations going to be for budget guidelines, but. Based on all of those other items that I mentioned previously, the committee is recommending some conservative budgeting this year. Essentially, um bringing forward a status quo budget that would include. You know, all of the current existing programs in place and prioritizing um maintaining our existing staffing levels, but not. Adding new programs or other items that would cost additional funding. Um in some of the initial numbers that we looked at, it was looking at potential six percent budget increase year over year just to maintain that program. So carrying forward contracted settlements with negotiated teacher and support staff contracts. Um CPI increases on those items that um you know typically are impacted by CPI. Um and any other areas where we've had to do ahead of time what the increase is going to be. One of the things to note. Um is that we reevaluated our projection on uh healthcare increases for next year from ten to fifteen percent. Increase. The initial um numbers are looking like that's where that number might land. Um so all that to say is what you've got before you this evening is sort of a rough draft. Um I think the sentiment is true. The final numbers, uh we're still waiting on some final figures for the quick level, quick model.
Well, thank you for that. Um this is always the thing we gotta walk carefully and talk about. So let's make sure we get to do it right, just like you guys are doing in Hanover and Dresden. Uh Gina, was your hand raised?
I do have a question. Um I'm not suggesting that we should do this, but when I've worked in corporations. When the premium price went up, sometimes the cost to the insured would also go up. For example, um. Instead of the company paying all of the premium for the person, the company paid seventy-five percent or something like that. Like I guess what I'm curious is. For this fifteen percent increase, have we explored other ways to reduce the impact of the healthcare costs on the district? Does that make sense?
Uh it does. Um I think the short answer is no. Um the longer answer is if we were going to do that, it would probably involve an M O U with the teachers union who negotiated a previously negotiated settlement. On because that actually just references specific dollar amount contributions. So not that it can't be done and we have done it in the past. Um but it isn't one of those things that the board could simply make a decision on the strip of a pen and have. Change.
I figured it was complex. Just wanted to clarify as a new board member.
Any other comments for budgetary stuff?
Related to that, um for new board members, we also have talked about payouts and increasing payouts and. Did some of that math and maybe worth doing that again. It didn't seem to make sense in terms of cost reductions in the past. So. Uh but we've, we have had conversations about those things. And our percent increase last year was three percent. Versus this.
Wow, I don't remember.
Not for the health, I mean for the total, like you said.
Budget, so the budget guideline last year, I believe, was a, was a zero percent. Increase. Um unfortunately, there was confusion amongst board members and administration, what that zero percent actually meant.
Right.
Um we had some, I think, some healthy and robust discussions in the budget committee meetings, especially the, the most recent one. With administration present so that we're all on the same page about whatever that final number is, if it's a six percent, what that six percent means. Um in terms of budgeting. So I'm sort of looking at my administration over here. And I, I think, I think we're all on the same page this year um versus last year, which was, you know, led to some awkward conversations. Um and I don't know, uh we um just this afternoon received, I think, some additional. Um information related to some potential increases in health insurance costs that um could possibly impact um. The guidelines that you're seeing here. So and I hate to say this, it's not that the situation got better, it's that it got worse. Um so we'll have, um I guess another month, we're gonna bring you forward at the next.
The specifics, what Neil was talking about was brought up to us in four chairs. It really is hot off the presses. It's a couple hours old. So the administration is still working out exactly what this means and doesn't mean and getting an exact dollar amount from our insurance company. So this will be discussed in more detail in October because it also impacts this current year's budget, not just next year's budgetary planning.
Yeah, so gives us a, a, another month to work through the additional details on, on the impact. And so we hope to have a finalized set of guidelines.
And and FYI, what we're talking about also impacts Hanover School District as well.
So uh I, I echo Neil's. Position on uncertainty. It seems like the two things that Vermont is exporting right now are maple syrup and public policy on Sunday. Um I work in healthcare, which has a lot of parallels to education. And I continually run into leaders who want to know how it's all gonna work out. Where's this story gonna end? I think these boards have come together the last few years to say, okay, we know what we care about. Kids and faculty in our communities. Um we don't know where it's gonna end. Let's play this hand of cards as best we can and figure out what happens next year. I think we've been very skilled at that, protecting our schools, our communities and acknowledging limitations of top status. I don't see any point in the next twelve months. We all know how all this is gonna shake out. I think it's the same deal. What's the best that we can do with what we actually know right now? And stand in front of the voters, give it our best shot. Uh but I think a real need for certainty and I, I just don't think it's out there in any way.
That's it. I thought the committee could do the best they can with information they have. And even noting that this will be coming to a vote tonight, I believe.
Uh no.
No, I mean for the guidelines.
No, there, there are too many unanswered figures in the quick model for me to come forward with a recommendation on what that final percent increase on date. So. I'm, I'm recommending that we defer this.
Okay, so you were asking to come to remove a budget, uh item six E. Is that correct, Neil?
Uh I'm assuming that you're accurately representing, so I would say yes.
All right, and Teresa Robin, any concerns about delaying this month? They're all good. Right, so remind me of that when we get to business caring action. Any further discussion on the information we have tonight? Specific to budget.
Yeah, Ben, I will just add this is purely uncertainly for administrators. I, I think I just want to clarify that, that what we previously discussed still holds.
Yes.
So I don't think that delaying it this evening should change how you all are preparing and proceeding.
Yeah, that's a good call on Neil. Thank you. All right, then we will shift to the tuition discussion. So Teresa, is this you?
Um, okay, so this year we have about a hundred and forty-eight tuitioned in students. Um we have both four exchange students, if that number hasn't changed. Um out of the tuitioned in students, we, I believe we also have two at um Paramus. We've got, out of those, there's thirty-nine ninth graders, twenty-eight tenth graders, forty-five eleventh graders, and then thirty-five twelfth graders. And seventy-five students are coming from Lyme and we have thirty-four coming from Hartland. And then we have two or three pockets from Cornish, Weathersfield.
Is that roughly aligned with what we were expecting?
Uh yeah, it, it's pretty close to what it was last year. We were right around the hundred and forty-five, forty-eight for last year.
And remind me, it's Hartland getting a bus at the moment or no?
They are getting buses and Lyme getting picked up also.
Any questions for Teresa on tuitioning students? All right, thank you, Teresa. And then the D O E national report. So what we just talked about in Hanover, any update on that?
This one I don't have after working on the other and everything else going on, just getting fully staffed and stuff. So um I didn't, I didn't have it all the way done, so obviously I'm not gonna present it. And then I'd like to have it looked at. I'm having um Jamie Teague review them anyhow, just like it did with the Hanover before I, you know, finalize it.
So I see that we, we're, we're scheduled to approve this tonight and it has a due date of September thirtieth. So do we need, are you asking for a second Dresden meeting in the next week?
Um the signature part is, is a little different. They'll accept that after and everything else, but. I need to get, I want to get the report done so I can get that submitted because we can actually submit that without the signature part. Because they're gonna do a review anyhow. Um so the signature part, even if it comes a little later. We don't know that we need to hold a special meeting for that. Because again, once I submit it, it's highly likely that they'll have you pick something or review something. So.
Is that fairly typical?
Yes. Most people get excited when they only have to get it twice.
Okay, is there anything you need from us to make that D O E report complete or?
No, why just be fine?
All right, any questions on this? Otherwise we'll. Might be submitted the next week without our signature and we will look at it when there's time for our signatures. Anyone have any concern for that? So you know, we'll run along. Thank you, Teresa. And now we'll do some of those are discussed in detail in Hanover at the meeting earlier this month, the N H S B A resolutions. Ben, you want to walk us through those and, and also let us know how Hanover voted on each of them?
Yes. Um first of all, I had ever voted to give me carte blanche and just to do what I've. You can do the thing. So.
There was something about that board today.
Okay, so the very first resolution will probably look familiar, at least I hope it does, because it's ours.
Proposed resolutions.
Uh the proposed, yes, we are looking at proposed resolutions. Um the. Because this is where you really have to sort of make some decisions. So our first resolution, as you know, or might remember, was about open enrollment and being concerned about that. We listed a number of reasons why we were concerned. And the N H S B A proposed an alternative resolution. And I am on the one hand, fine with taking their wording because. That some folks may well accept it more uh graciously. If it comes from the N H S B A than if it maybe came from Hanover or Dresden, because. We, we tend to push things a little bit. Well, maybe I do at the meetings. But they suggested alternative language that specifically says they oppose any open enrollment legislation. That would have the effect of further undermining. And I just personally feel that that language and the handle of words seemed to agree with me. Was too tentative. Um and I am going to actually. Offer an amendment so that it says. Uh as it will have the effect of further undermining the reliability of projecting revenues. So my suggestion was to go ahead and, and accept their alternative. But to amend it to be more precise about the language and the Hanover School Board was fine about that. Um. And what I will do is go through each one and you can ask questions if you have them, but then. Or, or, or not. Um. So the next one was pretty much, this is the Dover School Board saying a similar, having a similar re- resolution about open enrollment. And N H S B A just put forward our proposal. Oyster River also had an open enrollment. And, and frankly, I participated in a monthly Zoom one, I remember, with some. School board members from around the state, many of whom are involved in the N H S B A and come to that meeting and bounce ideas around. And so they already know that at least the Hanover Board proposed this slight tightening of the language. Um so that's the thirteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth resolution. The next one is Chesterfield proposing. The addition of the language about public education aid for formulas so that the state fully fund. All public education before they start giving money away to other places. The N H S B A actually. I think made the language even bolder and more. Um expansive by saying all state public schools, public school districts and public education. So the N H S B A's alternate resolution. Was even stronger and the Hanover School Board said, yep, let's go with that. Um. And then the next one is also from Chesterfield. And what they did was really interesting. They reacted to a practice in Concord of attaching non-German amendments. To bills. And they said, we don't want that to happen. It happens all the time. But even more important, the N H S B A says, oh, don't, let's not monkey with that right now because there are times when we want something. Added on to an existing bill. And in fact, according to a conversation I had with our state rat Mary Hacken Phillips. There is an currently an effort to attach something that will, to an existing bill that has not finished making its way through Concord. That will address some of the problems Claremont is facing. So it's an example of how you don't want to do that, even though on the surface it looks like it could be a good idea. So we agreed that um we would go along with the N H S B A not supporting that one. Um. Raymond has a resolution that says. Uh. All schools that receive state and or federal funding shall comply with all applicable state and federal laws regarding testing hiring practices, et cetera. And the N H S B A didn't want to go down that road towards the possibility that it would look as if they were supporting vouchers. So they said, let's, let's just leave that. Um. Because if they do have hiring and testing and such, then do we have to support them? And they do not want to go there. So we agreed with that recommendation. Um my pad is stuck here. Um. We're now on Raymond wanting a. I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, Raymond wanting a specific amount added to building. Aid and increasing it every two years. And the problem is that there are all the, there's already a. Resolution that is, there are two existing resolutions that are attached here, one from twenty twenty-three, one from twenty seventeen. About funding building aid and facility needs and the state has filled this since twenty, since two thousand nine. So we had a bit of a conversation about this one, but um. The N H S B A was not supporting it and. I can't recall quite all of our conversation.
I think there was concern early discussion that N H S B A seems to be rather picky about when they enforce the soul. We had a resolution on this.
Right.
I think that's where we left off.
We did and, and we did, we had this conversation about some additional resolutions that are gonna come up where they go, well, we've got something on the books. But the most recent one was, you know, in this case, two thousand nine, in other cases, twenty eleven. It's almost like they don't want to have to work too hard. If it's there somewhere, then that's good enough. And so I'm. I'm fine about. Whatever you guys decide you want to do. We sort of left it hanging a little bit. We also have another Hanover School Board meeting before the. Um N H S B A. So it may be tonight brings everybody to a clear place on that one. So that's. Brings everybody to a clear place on that one. So that's a little bit fuzzy.
And didn't we say something about like, there was like a theme of a few of them that we would. Then you would present with the recommendation to reemphasize these specific areas?
Right. And this, this was one of them.
I have to clarify, Dresden has not scheduled to meet again before.
No, 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 I apologize. Hanover has another meeting, so Hanover could kind of kick that one down the road a little bit. And we sort of kicked twenty and twenty-one, which are Concord School Board resolutions, and they're both. Grounded in their own specific experience. Number twenty with. The need for subsidizing school lunches. And they are calling for a resolution to provide permanent funding. And again, the school, the N H S B A said. Um. You know, we already addressed this. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. So that one is more recent. So. I'm fine with not supporting that one. On the other hand, if they wanna, if Concord says, we really want. To make this point. So the legislature. And I use as an example, talking to my granddaughter on the first day of kindergarten, when she came home that night, she's so proud of herself. And her mother asked for what she'd had for lunch, and I thought. What do you mean? What did she have for lunch? Don't you, do you send it to her to school or whatever? But Maine feeds everybody. And they feed them breakfast and they feed them lunch. And so she had her snacks and. She's a, she's a healthy eater. So um it was a reminder that it's perfectly okay. To. Um, to support Concord in this. And the next one was also Concord, again, talking about gun control. Again, emphasizing gun-free school zone. And once again, the School Board Association said. Man, you know, we talked about this last year. We've got stuff on the board, on the, our continuing resolutions. And again, I think the general sense from Hanover was, let's go ahead and push this one. And not just keep backing off from a conversation about gun control. So again, those are things for you guys. To decide. Um. The. Number twenty-two was hooks at about lowering the threshold to fifty plus one vote. And. The School Board Association backed off being that precise about fifty percent plus one vote. Thinking that maybe. It should be, it would be better to say, let's talk about what that number is. And I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one, probably. Other people in the room remember when we voted to purchase the Dresden fields? And what that vote passed by? One. And I just don't, I, I mean, it happened, it worked, but I think it's probably not. The best thing to pass by one vote, something that is that substantive. But. Anyway. So this one, we were going to support the alternative resolution. And then number twenty-three. Is focused using older language uh for about catastrophic special education fund, which it's not called any longer. And reimbursement. And this is the one where. One of my colleagues. Got quite adamant, pointing to. The New Hampshire School Board Association saying, oh, we don't support this. We've got existing resolutions, and they have five of them. One of them's nineteen ninety-four. One is nineteen ninety-eight, one is two thousand five, one two is two thousand eleven, and one's. Nineteen ninety. So it hardly seems as if. That is a done deal. And so we were talking about, you know, let's support that. Um. For the principle of it, you know, just being sort of not ordinary, but come on. These are lying there and they're old. Let's update them. And then the final one was Manatnak. Talking about someone attending the meeting via Zoom, counting towards a quorum. Um, which would acknowledge and enable people with disabilities or caring for someone with a disability to be considered part of a quorum if necessary for a public meeting. And so I think the language was. The um, the tweaks that. The School Board Association recommend seem fine. Um. And so we were s- supporting that.
That's one I have a question on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, is, does that resolution only apply to people who have a disability or a child with disability? Or does it apply to like, say, any of us being able to attend?
We asked the same question at Hanover, and you noted correctly that the alternative resolution does not have any certain implication for disability. Very much virtual.
I would like to strongly support that one.
So that's, it was. At in the interest of time, and I am not meaning. To um do anything except reassure my colleague that sometimes we can get out of here early. I know. Saying that out loud, so I'm not. But my proposal would be for the Dresden Board to consider supporting. The positions taken by the Hanover School Board on the resolutions. But also to give me additional. Uh, authority to vote on things as they come up, if anything, you know, something's amended, whatever.
And for numerous of the board, similar languages is done for each of these meetings, because things may come up during the meeting that we can't foresee. And also note, that is open to board members uh to attend for free, and there are occasional other board members in the audience. And Deb is the one voting member who gets to hold up two different things to their two districts, which is.
It is really fun. I mean, only person representing two boards, and they always make sure that everybody else knows there is somebody there. Who has two ballots, because they're bright orange. So.
Voting for directing places.
Well, they need lights.
Any county board members, Neil?
Uh, process question for Deb. For the ones where N H S B A has recommended alternate language.
Mm-hmm.
Do you actually vote for, for example, would we vote on the original Dresden proposed resolution and. Then entertain the alternative language? How does, how, what's the process?
What they do is um. They have the school board member. Read their amendment. And then everybody can see that it has been. Uh, an alternative language has been offered. And I could say. I would like to amend the alternative language to say such and such. It used to be. That it didn't even come up for a conversation. If the New Hampshire School Board Association didn't support it. Unless somebody stood up and said, wait a minute, I wanna talk about my resolution anyway. Um, does that answer your question?
So, so they would, so. Our, the Dresden resolution would be presented, but it wouldn't be voted.
Well, it could be if we say we don't accept the alternative.
So the, the, the home district, the district that proposed it can.
Yes.
Choose to, I get it.
Yes, they can choose to. Yeah.
And if they choose not to accept it, then is that alternative language that you disappear?
Often what happens is that the body. Both down their motion, and then they go to the alternative language. I mean, that's, that could happen. What usually happens is that they're grateful for the word smapping. That's been done, and they hop right to the alternative resolution. They, most of the board representatives. Are reluctant to push back against. The school board's. Association recommendation. The School Board Association, yeah.
And I, I think. And part of what you're proposing is, you can also say, I accept the amended language, except for this one part, where I would like to revert to the original language, right? I think in, as you're making, as you're the school board member presenting your motion.
Right.
You kind of can recraft and say, I accept the amendment, except for this. Sentence, which we would like to read as stated in the origin.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments on the resolutions? And I know there is a vote on this tonight.
I guess very briefly. Um, on number twenty-two. They dislike um super majority requirements. I don't understand why forty percent plus one people could stop. Infrastructure investments. What is the alternative position of the N H S B A on that?
Well, they, their language. Says. Um, what does the language say?
Like a little more.
Right, a little more, they're very, I mean, it really has to be a bill that goes through the legislature that changes it.
No, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I mean.
It's fuzzy.
I mean, not worth um belaboring a discussion here, but I just. I, I think, you know, it becomes very hard to persuade. Sixty or sixty-five percent of people anytime.
Right.
Um, and school infrastructure is really important. And so schemes that. Make one person vote more important than others um are distasteful to me personally. And as a school board member, just. You know, worry about our ability to do our job when facilities reach a certain point.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just to clarify, I think the current, the current law requires that super majority.
Yes.
Yeah, and they're, they're asking for a fifty percent plus one. So they're, the, the Hookset School Board is proposing that we bring it down to a.
Yes, I would, um, speaking for myself, I, I would be very much in favor of Hookset's position. Um, N H S B A. I'm trying to understand why they're serving waffles on this, what flavor of waffles?
Yeah. Well, if you prefer Hookset's. Position, we can absolutely. Vote and support Hookset. I mean, I think there's no question that so many schools are looking at aging facilities, and we see it over in Vermont with Woodstock, I think that keeps trying. Can we please fix this?
That, that's a, Deb, thank you for finding Mr. Chairman, like. But if, if. This is one of those times, though, where, you know, I, I'm just one voice on the board, and you're very close to this. And so I defer to your judgment about, hey. What are the continuing relationships in this conversation, N H S B A and whatnot? Personally, I'd be in favor of saying, yeah, Hookset has a point here.
Oh.
And if, and if so, and as the, the vote calls for, like Deb, you can kind of see in the boots on the ground what's happening and. Reading the room, reading that some, a new poll comes on the line or new information comes in.
Yeah. And if you, i- if you're comfortable with fifty plus one, I'm, I'm for it. I'm fine. I don't have a problem standing up.
You can just end the sentence right there. I know that's true.
So can I just do a quick straw poll of the group's preference on twenty-two to accept the. Alternative resolution? Or, well, first, to go with Hookset's proposal. Is there a sense from people that you would like to support Hookset with fifty plus one?
I guess my comment is, I don't think the alternative resolution said a few things.
It does.
Yeah, so I guess if we're either like, we're the fifteen plus one or we're not for it. And so. Um, I, 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 my vote is, I just want you to make, I trust you to make the best decision, because I live in Vermont. I, I was, I don't, I don't have strong feelings, but I'm fine going with the hook that, um. I will just point out, I think that. Yes, it's, it's wishy-washy language, but I think it's also points to the purpose of. These directives, which are to suggest, we want you to look at this issue, right? There, there's nothing binding here. There's nothing. Like, most of these sat, don't go anywhere. It's just putting a stake in the ground and saying, we want you to work on this, right? Um, and it gives their lawyers and their lobbyists. Something to come back to, to say, look, the school boards want this, we need to work on this. So, I mean, I think their, perhaps their thinking was. We're never gonna get fifty plus one, but maybe if we work towards lowering it some, that might be. More. So I think that's probably the rationale behind.
I think.
I agree.
Any other conversation or comments from board members or the public regarding the N H S B A proposed resolutions? Seeing none, we're aligned with business requiring action. As I made recall from earlier in the meeting, we are not gonna propose an approval of the budget guidelines or the D O E annual financial report tonight. So, and the resolutions are a separate item. So if I can hear a. Consent motion for items B through D, that would be much appreciated. Kelly?
Move to approve items B through B by consent.
Seconded by Michael of Nine Line of Vision. Tara's joining us remotely last she did in the Hanover meeting. So we need to do this one at a time, or roll call, well, starting with Neil?
Go, yes.
Sullivan, yes, McConnell, yes.
Host, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Russell, yes. Egonia, yes.
Christie, yes.
And Tara, are you there?
For those who, yes.
And Keeney, yes, thank you everyone for that. And Tara, stay nearby for the. Resolution language. Deb, you wanna try crafting this one?
Sure.
Except in the third person, as you will.
Oh, I know, he's so good. Move to authorize Deb Nelson to vote. For the N H S B A resolutions on behalf of the present school board, consistent with. The Hanover School Board decisions and. Authorize her to vote on other businesses needed at the annual meeting on October the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded by Gina. Tara, we start with you today, or just now?
Sorry, for those who, yes.
And then back to Neil.
Host, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Russell, yeah. Christie, yes.
And Keeney, yes, thank you everyone. Moving on to reports and communications. Um, as Chair's report will be short, the next meeting is on October twenty-eighth. That is after the resolution, after the, the meeting. So Deb, let us know how that goes. And um, as we literally did get some updates today, and they'll have uh ramifications for this year's budget, but we don't really know enough to have a in-depth discussion about it. So look forward to that in October with some shit written. You will not like it. That's all of my happy news. Other than that, thank you for everyone's working hard on these committees, and we're gonna hear about them now, shifting to seven A. I think we've heard from the Budget Committee in detail. Neil, anything to add to that, or are we good?
We're good.
All right, on the Central Staff Development Committee, Deb and Tara, anything we need to know about?
Uh, well, now we've had reports for um. Summer enrichment grants, and we're, we have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, so just same old, same old.
Okay. And I do know, I'm gonna have the earlier conversation on the budget that next year, I believe, is a sabbatical year. So would that be C S T C as well?
But that's not until January. Looking at all these former and current chairs over there.
So no news on that, which is perfectly fine. And Deb, you're still, you're still here. How about Council? Anything to add in the park for what Ian said earlier?
No, the cell phone conversation has been rich.
So I get that policy is meeting tomorrow morning, and that will be a, a couple of discussions. You can, you can let me know anything that we need to know, policy sense.
Sure.
And then how about the H S E T C?
You don't need to expand it, since I'm on the policy. So when you say. Rich, it's like, I'm a little confused, because last year, I understand, what is this? Cell phones were not used in class. So why is it such a big change this year?
Well, last year, there was a wonderful move. Hanover developed, Hanover tested, Hanover approved for cell phones that worked really well, and the students like it. And. There's been a great deal of conversation about the fact that we don't have bells, that um we have a system that worked well for us. What does that mean? Can students, you know, if they're, like, one student wanted to know, if I go take my class at Dartmouth, does that mean I can't be on my phone? No, it doesn't mean that. But, you know, they're, they're getting in the weeds and they're upset, and it's too late. And various members of council have pointed out. It's too late. We need to figure out how to work with this. And they, the moderator council is gonna be at the policy meeting tomorrow and talk about it. I think. The two areas they're most concerned about, one is. Punishment um and or response to violations of the cell phone policy once it's created. And the second one. Is what effect will this have on the atmosphere at school? Will it drive students? Out of the building during free periods because they wanna be on their phones. Um, so it's just. It's a normal, I think, reaction to a. More stringent, rigid. System being put in place, a, a regret that they didn't know about it at the time it was happening. Um, and a sense on the part of some, well, we just won't follow the rules. And, and that, you know, is an understandable reaction, but it's one that has been sort of.
The previous thing you said, I'm pretty clear, they didn't use their cell phones in the class, but when it came out in the hallway, they could use that, or if they're sitting at their lunch.
Except for breaks.
Right.
The classes have breaks, so during a class period, you weren't allowed to have your phone as you walked to the cafeteria to get a snack. It was, they were checked at the door.
It was bell to bell for the class.
Bell to bell for the class.
Yeah, non-bell to non-bell.
In a policy committee sense, we do have technical guidance from the state, which is rather detailed, and it, I actually liked it quite a bit, it's 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 not. Political at all, it's purely. Regulation interpretation, it's it's pretty solid, it's worth working through that in policy right now. And it is, I want to say, it's not cell phones, it is devices that that can connect to the internet, so things like smartwatches and stuff are also applicable. Which is why you may have seen articles in the press, but how there's been an increase in iPod usage and things like that, as sources for music that are not connected to the internet. Um. Uh, Kelly.
Just wanna say, I love the attempt to to find a loophole in the bell to bell.
I also, I, you know, I just, I know, I, it is gonna. Drag kids outside the building to check things, and I know that because it's partly coming from the parents, right, but like, the schedule change that happens at ten AM. And what, what do we do about that? Like, when we, you need to talk with your child to figure out what does mean, not just like, you know, if it's elementary school.
Send a note to the office and you say, my child needs to take the bus home, end of story.
I will, one thing that, that highly relevant to what you're saying, and it's also, and I don't know if the students have caught this yet, or the teachers, all of the high school administration knows about it, because we talked about it. But in this cellphone language, it's not purely devices, it's also methods of communication.
Right.
Some of the technical advice we've been given is that social media. Is not to be used for updates of that information. So it's in opening up things like, if there's a change in a sports practice has been canceled, or whatever, something to do with weather, or whatever. How do we do that without social media? Members of sports use Instagram as their source of contact for updates, that is explicitly called out, is no longer going to be allowed. So we're dealing with that right now, because that's gonna cause issues with the schools, but we also know that announcements over the loudspeakers are. Staticy, if you're outside, you miss it, if you're in the bathroom, you miss them, all that other stuff. And we've been told anecdotally that the students do not seem to read their emails that we get, that is from IT. So then how do we have these sort of late notification systems? If it's no phones, no social media, email's not possible, and audio speakers are not really possible. And that's one of the reasons why this is taking longer than policy than you may think. I don't, you know, pick any worms, just, these are some of the things that we're dealing with, Michael, then Carrie, and then I do know the time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Difference between possible and preferable.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And when, 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 what do you mean, not destroying?
I mean, when people say, well, it's just not possible to communicate without cell.
Oh, yes, okay.
It's it's preferred.
And it has been done before.
It has, I I distinctly remember someone who looked like me with more hair.
Yeah.
I just, I, to me. I think in any rule change. There are consequences. I think we gotta be real clear about. You know, now we, I I don't, you know, I'll wait till it comes back, but. Trade-offs for the trade, sake of trade-offs, I don't think it's good, I just think there's, it's hard to have a no cellphone policy without. Having no cell phones.
Carrie and then Kelly.
This is smart qualification, because I have a very limited experience of high school, is it totally open campus? I guess I'm just curious, because I work in a high school in Vermont, and know that, like. They just don't have access to their phones, so it's not a question of, like, leaving the building, like. Unless you're like, gone, gone, like, the end of your day, so I'm just curious, like. Kids would just be able to have access to their phone to, like, run out to their car. I just don't, I don't know.
So yes, we have open campus, if parents approve, which most do from the second half of ninth grade on. Um. And kids have cars parked in different places, where they could leave their phones in their cars. They could, we're not supposed to see them according to this policy, so then we can't check them at the door, so then they'll be in. Everywhere, right, so you go to the bathroom. You walk outside, you know, when they leave campus, like, I know that Ford Academy unlocks their yonder boxes, so they can have them in their cars while they're driving on off-campus, but. Here, they might use Apple Pay. At the co-op, at the loco, at whatever, so like, to not have their phones means they can't do Apple Pay, which, yes, they can go back to carrying their credit card or a check or cash. But like, these are just things that people have gotten used to, and families have gotten used to being able to do. As a way to track their kids, new drivers, parents like to track them, so you could have off-campus, it complicates it a little bit.
Yeah, that's helpful, kind of. Keep going through this.
Yeah.
Slowly, Kelly.
The last thought for just policy, and it actually is probably more implementation at the high school. Just as a parent of a sophomore, it would be helpful to have that directive, if we had something come up just today, where. It required a conversation, what does that look like, right? What, how does that process, do I call the office, does the office go get my child? Then come down and have a conversation, like, what, what is the process for that?
Yep.
Well, yeah. I'm definitely a hypothetical situation where a child has, uh, needs to reach you because they're uh, upset. And is there a place for them to be able to go and call their parent, like, in the past, when I was in seventh grade and had more hair than Michael? I could go to the payphone, and it was private, and there's not necessarily a private place um, for, so, I think, you know, I think it's, I think. I think there's like, two things to meet, right now, is we can, there are preferences, and there's also. People are used to using things in a different way, and like, to your point, the Apple Pay, there's a lot of things that are um. Are not being. Acknowledged by the bill, and I think a lot of parents support not having it, and frankly, the kids would say they're really proud of how well they did, and that when. The evaluators came, they said, wow, we're so impressed with how Hanover is doing it, I think that's where you're hearing the noise. From, that's what I hear from the many students that I hear from in my house.
And I will point out in this conversation that we do have the new survey data that actually gets at this directly. And just to remind board members that across the entire SAU, approximately forty-six percent of our kids have a smartphone. At the high school, ninety-five percent have a smartphone, and at the middle school, forty-nine percent have a smartphone, so it is also not just a high school issue. Which is why we asked those questions, Carrie.
Um, one of my questions, too, is so much of this bill, or not so much of this bill, but the movement across the country is around mental health for kids, and the um. You know, to go back to the social media thing, and so I would be curious, especially because I do get concerned around. Um, access in the hallway of meaning, that like, any of that, you know, the the ways in which. The impact of social media on mental health. Um, is so much that social aspect, which is hallways, which is breaks, which is outside of school time, and so I think. Um, and and Hanover is not without that need um. For their high school students, and so I think, one, I, like, I think change is hard, I think. And I also have concerns about, like, if the times in which the access is happening is when. It is the social, it is that piece, which is a big push nationally, why this is being looked at for kids, um, just to be considerate of like. Why the downtime is maybe not the best time for those breaks in um.
Phone use, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, duly noted. Anything else on the committee update from Council?
I will just say that there are members of Council who are very, very thoughtful. About conversations about cell phones, including. Um, speaking to their colleagues on Council about the importance. Of being leaders in whatever the policy ends up being, about being gracious about this, there are also ongoing. Conversations with the Student Life Committee about. Creating a space in the school where people can be to um. It sort of breathe in and breathe out a little bit, to look for ways to create space for students to have uh. You know, not a device-free, but a an escape. I don't even know what the proper language is.
Well-being, well-being.
Thank you. Well-being space, thank you. So it's, it's not all to be in one direction, it. Which is really wonderful to see.
Um, Renee, you're in, are you still good? Lisa.
Yeah, just kind of a quick question um, for the Council rep. Um, have you all spoken with schools that are already doing this? Bell to bell and doing it bell to bell and finding out, you know. Their experience, I I'm not asking you to report that right now, but I I would just be curious if anyone has gone to other schools that are, that are doing this, like, I know BMU in Vermont. Is bell to bell already, like, they just, they've started it, so I just, I would be curious about how they've handled. And whether they're seeing that. Well-being has increased, I mean, sort of to Carrie's point, that not having your phone. During lunch means you're actually having a conversation with someone across the table from you, and has that been enjoyable? Um, so anyway. Just some thoughts, there are, there are schools that are already doing this, in a more quote-unquote severe way.
I don't, I don't believe, like, we've reached out to other schools, but I think that's a great idea, and we definitely should do that.
And at least my understanding of the academic literature is that it's been a fairly obvious return on an ROI on implementation.
Yeah, and it it just might help them to hear directly from the student, you know. And and to learn about the pitfalls, like, make sure you have. You know, couches that face each other somewhere in the building, so people can sit and talk to each other, I don't, you know, I don't know, like, simple, simple things like that.
Great, thank you for that, those contributions, everyone, moving right along, uh, Carrie, anything on the current tech summer?
No, the first meeting is Wednesday.
Great, looking forward to that next month, and anything else in the Tuition Committee besides what we've already talked about?
Oh, no, we haven't met since the last meeting.
Let's move along to the superintendent, oh, Renee, what's going on?
There was one thing from the Hanover's capital program planning. Committee.
Relevant to Dresden?
Relevant to Dresden, yes, so that's what this weird PS number four replacement is, uh. And our capital group project list just gave you cr- um, context, so. The one thing um, that we talked about when we met last Friday was um, there was a. Uh, need to reconstruct. Um, a pump, PS four, pump station four. In that document that's kind of highlighted with my weird highlights, um, calls out trichloroethylene. Um, TCE is a contaminant that came from Krell, um, it's like a degreaser um, thing. Apparently fifteen-ish years ago, it was an issue that came up that the Dresden folks had to address. Deb was gonna follow up with an update, so.
So Carrie. Calleyon is on the school board and remembers that it was an annual report that Krell did, so I asked Robin. Are we still doing that? And Robin asked. Tony. Tony, and.
Director of Facilities.
Director of Facilities, and apparently Krell asked. Jay?
I thought of the monitoring at RMS. So we.
Yeah, yeah. Are you still doing it or not?
I believe their Krell is done with that monitoring.
Correct, and so the only question we had was whether. It would be appropriate to. Have some sort of maybe four-year plan of monitoring. I mean, I don't, I wrote back to Robin, who sent me an email just today, um, and said, and said, is there. Not knowing anything about previous. Reports and whether was ten years of zero presence, or, well, there was a little bit. A little bit more, a little bit less, we don't really need to do it, I just don't know whether it's prudent for us to be.
Question, looking.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have some questions here, Gina.
What, what is it that the board needs to.
Right.
Apine order on? I think I wanted to know, we're monitoring it, because it's a safety issue for, and have like, health and safety. Yeah, I mean, I remember when this came up ten or fifteen years ago at Krell, and in the neighborhoods, and it was. I remember enough that it wasn't great. We need to get smart about it, because, but I don't feel like I have enough context in this for not to understand what I. The board member should be doing to help us be smart about it.
I did check on this, and Tony. Said that Jay gave permission to Krell to stop the indoor sampling at. RMS, he thinks it's around two thousand twenty-one. And then, right. He said, um, he can try to get an exact feedback in touch, but I can also ask him if he has any of the results. Too.
Yeah, I think they're gonna see the results and also the rationale for a while, but why was it stopped? And so I think um, we'll ask the administration to get us some more information, and pending that information, we'll decide whether it's worth another conversation or some action.
As I recall, it had been basically clean and not worried for so many years, and then I think that's why it was suspended, but that's not to say that, you know. Every four years doesn't make sense, I think that might be worth.
And so just to reaffirm, so I think to kind of Gina's point, so Renee, this, you you brought this up as a result of this new pump opening up, does this pump have anything to do with that?
It, the, so there's on like, page two. Eleven here, two, two or six, whatever it says, uh, underside contamination, it lists a few different contaminants that all, it's like, that was resolved, that was resolved, and then it says with the trichloroethylene. And other contaminants um, are present in active uh, well. And similar compounds present in active well monitoring since the nineteen nineties, pump station number four lies within the groundwater management zone. For the TC contamination, so further investigation into the degree of contamination. And anticipated groundwater or soil handling and processing will be needed as part of a future phase, so the fact that it seems like it's. It sounded unresolved or potentially unresolved in this language made it.
Maybe want to keep hovering, yeah.
Interest to, let's maybe just confirm that we're still good.
Sure, I guess one of those is that, so where exactly is pump station number four? And is, I'm assuming it's not just RMS, RMS only, it's probably neighborhood including RMS.
Um, it's like the, that, that general area up there, um. I think they, they called it the Krell Pump Station, was like, the shorthand for it, but it is that, that neighborhood, River Crest, which is not developed, but could be the potential. Yeah, uh, Kendall, right, well, it's.
It says that it's at the end of an un. It's on an undeveloped grassy parcel owned by Dartmouth, at the end of an unnamed gravel road offline road. So I kind of felt like it was.
Their picture.
A little further along.
I think it is near River Crest, that's where, that's where the issue was fifteen years ago, in that area, it's near that yellow house on the left hand side.
And if our, our rep of that committee in town, maybe get some more details as well.
Uh, yeah, we'd love to.
Everyone okay to move on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, then, um, was there anything from the Tuition Committee?
No, though, I, Renee, just one word on it, um, Renee also did attach the Hanover Capital Enforcement Program, which is not. Per se relevant to this committee, except to call out the incredibly high. Costs that Hanover is projecting in fiscal year twenty-seven, which for them, and I had to look this up, fiscal year twenty-seven means. The year going from twenty twenty-six to twenty-seven, uh, which is the budget year that we're currently working on, so they're looking at twenty-eight million dollars for. Construction through downtown Hanover, um. So, which we kind of knew was coming, and they're still figuring out the funding mechanisms and all that, but um, yeah, just something to keep on.
Sorry about any conversations down the road in terms of both the tip as well as large things coming from the town, and how much it beats the schools or not with our things as well, Renee?
Just um, because it is substantial, uh, it's worth noting that that is the lowest number possible.
Right.
And about half of that was projected from a, or was unchanged from a twenty-twenty. Estimate, and so they're saying somewhere between fifty percent and a hundred percent more, so.
Similar to what Chris called. All the fun, I think, to our collective attention, we appreciate it, kind of.
Yeah.
We're okay to move on to the superintendent's reports, right, they are there. Robin and Lauren, anything you want to particularly highlight?
I'll just say two things, two related to the discussions we're having, I also have to ask the staff members. To provide feedback regarding the cellphone policy, and I did get several responses to that, so that's good, we've had some good staff response. Um, in terms of the tuition. Committee, we did have a tuition agreement defined by line that has been moved by their board, and they would now like to set up meetings with our board chair. And their board chair to discuss further years of tuition agreements, so we will start working on that. And then I also included information about our leadership team meetings, we had our first last week, and um. I'm really trying to spend a lot of time in the schools, because I know as the year ramps up, it becomes more and more difficult. So I have been spending a lot of hours in each of our schools, and um, we did have our first. Leadership meeting here at the high school, and we're looking at instructional coaching data. And using some of the tools in the classroom, so we're reading a book called Data Rules that I included in the. Um, agenda, and you can see that we are going through that step by step and having discussions about the book, and then taking the tools. And actually using them in the classroom, and so I compiled some data from. The tools that we use, and I shared that with all of the staff as well, so they can see some of the teaching and learning that we're doing as a leadership team. And that's my report for tonight, oh, and one other thing, I am also setting up meetings to meet with various student groups. Meet with various student groups in all of our schools too, so I'll start doing that in the next few weeks as well.
Any questions from board members of the public for this, for our superintendent? Okay, super long title, Lauren.
As then eloquently put it, the report is there. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Lauren? Thank you for documenting Lauren, we appreciate it.
It's just, cause I, I couldn't tell this was okay or not, so uh, with the title one. The, we had it before a thousand last year, we have seven thousand this year, big drop with the Hanover conversation. It was, we're gonna probably be okay, but that because of the small rural school achievement.
Yes, so in, yes, in our discussion, we were like, we can patch this together, we have access to the SRSA funding. We will be able to use S R S A funding to cover the shortfalls of the decreases in allocation in the Hanovers side. That is not the case for Dresden, so just adding a little bit more insult to injury and great news here in the Dresden meeting this evening. Um, I'm working with Julie to consider how we can look at the program differently. Think about um, if any changes can be made, made to the Bear Camp program that would be completely covered with the allocation that we have. And if that's not the case, um, what we would need to do in the budget that we cannot increase to. Not currently being funded in uh, the title one. So I don't think we're sounding any major alarms at this point, but just worth noting that there is an obvious trend here for both Hanover. And Dresden and it seems to be more significantly impacting Dresden because of the lack of SRSA funds. And yet, just to, you know, the, the wonderful news here is look at all of the other incredible things that we. Through um, grant opportunities, but we, I just will keep an eye on the grant cutting that we have and we'll make decisions that we can. Um, based on the information that comes out. I've attended several meetings, both on the Vermont side and the New Hampshire side. And pretty much everybody is saying they're not quite sure how to forecast future years when it comes to funding. Um, and so that's some, there's something to be said with that as well, uh, hopefully it can come back to you next year at this time, it's really great news. About grant funding, but there's also the possibility that some of the things that have been funding through grants. Won't be, have had the opportunity to do so in the future and we'll have to.
Can you tell me if Fred Fusana has walked through our campus?
So, so Bear Camp, um, if you came anywhere close to this campus, uh, the couple of weeks in August right before school started. You would see some um, incoming ninth grade students wandering the campus, so they have opportunities. To learn all sorts of skills needed for the transition to the high school, so it could be things like learning schoology and the technology systems. Um, it's making connections with peers that are also coming in, um, it's, uh, I saw them take a couple of field trips, I'm not sure where they were going. But they were doing a couple of field trips to the community to, I think, probably ground themselves, yeah. Uh, but the goal is that they're coming in with some academic skills, some technology skills, and then some social emotional connections. So their start to their high school, um, they get off to a great start and they have those connections going in. Think the kindergarten camp, but for.
Nice parallel. Thank you, Lauren. Um, moving along to Teresa who wrote and documented her own report, thank you for that, Teresa. Um, I don't know why, but for me it pops up as a download with a separate screen rather than just a, a language shift.
Showing like one of my other documents.
There.
So we'll go through the assembly. So any comments or questions for Teresa on this, and thank you for putting it down there, Teresa.
The only thing I, I wanna add is, um, I know the cell phone thing is a big deal with the. Being um, sort of off campus in our open campus that we have, but I just kind of wanna put a bug in the air that, um. Like you're going through food services this year, it's kind of one of the things that we really have to address. Because we're gonna continue to fall into a big deficit, because what's offered off campus. Seems to be more interesting than what's we're offering here, so I'm working with food service company and everything else too. To, how can we turn this around and get the students to wanna eat here instead of going to the co-op and going down the street? Of course, the cell phone thing's not helping now. Give more reason to leave and go, right?
Gina? A provocative thought or question is, do we, like, do we try to have them eat here or do we accept? That they do, do, I know we have to have something, but if they're not going for what they're, like, is there somewhere in between? Trying to fix this and say, well, what would they, like, are we asking these juniors, what would they like, would they? Is it fruits and yogurts and bananas, I'm making this, that's what I would want. And, you know, that would keep them here so they need something quick versus trying to solve it with like a hot meal. Maybe, where they eat food and so maybe, you know, what are they buying in the co-op, they, they buy like sushi. You know, or what, how can we meet them closer?
It's all of that.
Yeah.
Um, those conversations have been happening, um. Um, Rob and I had a meeting earlier back in the spring, um, right before school ended, so it wasn't an opportunity to get to that point. To just go see it in operation to the way it was, um, with the new service director Keith, um, that's over there now. We've been meeting quite a bit and then the food service, um, the, um. Janice, who's now the assistant VA, she's been actually meeting with the directors also on. Sort of the financial operation of it, and then I'm meeting with the others on the actual operation of it, how, how can we turn this around? Because like I said, I'm seeing that the sales are just dropping. Pretty, pretty rapidly in the last couple years since I've been here.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that, because I remember historically, I thought all the schools did fairly well at staying in the black when it came to.
Richmond, the share. They ended up in the red also.
So one thing that I heard purely anecdotally through my child and her social group was that. What was this, what was going to be on the schedule is not what was actually there. And then people start realizing they don't look at the calendar to predict and they just kind of wanted to start bringing in their own things. But that's mostly conjecture on my part. And I remember one thing that Lauren and I did several years ago along with a former board member, Kim Hartman. When we were trying to find a contractor for the Ray food contract was. At the time, there's been a push from parents to be like, my kid, my kids are so healthy, they don't wanna have tails, movies and. And how come we're not doing that? And I suppose the kids never actually bought that, it was more wishful thinking. Kind of doing that dance between, to your point, what is, what should the schools be offering philosophically versus what will they actually eat? And that's always a.
That's, that's, it's gonna be a hard, in a way, it's a hard balance, just trying to figure out how to serve the. A healthier foods and stuff like that, we, I mean, and I won't go deep detail, but just a quick, even like free and reduced. They're getting à la carte. So they're grabbing and going, they're not eating a meal either.
Right.
And the funds they get is usually gone by breakfast, so we have to address that issue too. Um, so there's a combination of things, but, um, like I said, in the last couple of years, things that I've really noticed that the. And there was a survey and I, I requested a copy of the survey, because there was supposed to be a survey that, but I never, I don't know what happened to it.
What, what kind of survey?
It's been students like food out of the program and what they didn't, didn't like and things like that.
Food at the cafeteria is relatively expensive, actually. The, we can get, for example, you can get three chicken tenders and a chocolate milk, a chocolate milk is three dollars and fifty cents. And if you go to the co-op, which is a walk away, you can get an entire hot meal, which is much higher quality than the cafeteria.
If the club is cheaper than ours, we have a problem. That's, that's. Thank you for that perspective, I didn't know. Uh, Garrett?
I mean, I, Teresa, this is the first time, yeah, I've heard of this, I've. My son's meal time, and it's very, very, very definitely constantly, so it seems to be perfecting all of it, but. Is it worth having this? Council maybe, just given the fact I heard tonight, like, you know, the cell phone policy was brought up by the students, so they felt like they had. A say, a voice in it, so same thing here, I think if the students had a voice in what the cafeteria is. Problems where they might be more loyal to going there, right, like, I, right, because at the end of the day, we're asking them to. Support local versus going across the street, they were sort of, is that something that like?
Well, that's how this goes first as a board member, then bring it to Linda.
Yeah, I, it, I can let Linda answer that, because it's sort of a little off, it's another idea.
Linda, you wanna say who you are and.
Hey, council, actually, yeah. There is a committee on council called the student life committee and they are putting together a survey that will be, you know, I think that might have been the survey you heard about, Teresa. Um, and prior, I guess, in, in previous years, like last year, council also had a great working relationship with the cafe. So there was a constant conversation between students, you know, trying again to sort of get and. Alter the food choices that would best match what students are. I think what, I just wanna echo what Ian said, what I keep hearing from everyone on council is just. How much more expensive it is, how unpredictable the quality of the food is, and I do not in any way want this to reflect on the staff. Because we love the people that work there, we absolutely do, um, there's just been a difference in food, food cost and food quality, I think is what I'm hearing from students. The students love the people who work there, yes.
Linda, if and when that survey happens, could you pass along the results?
Sure, that'll be in shop.
All right, Carrie, then Kelly.
Just a clarifying question, did the contractor change, just with like how you were speaking about it?
The contract company did not, well, they were bought out. And then we even considered, obviously, consider going out to bid, but they bought the competition too.
Yeah.
So kind of have a monopoly now.
So is this the company that was formerly Cafe Services?
Correct, now it's owned by Witsen, they still kind of go by Cafe, but they also purchased the Abbey Group.
Yeah, and Abbey was the main competition as well. All right, thanks to, you know where that contract is up by the way?
Yeah, we just, um, well, at this point, we just renewed it. And everything else, so at this, we're just kind of going along year to year.
Yeah.
I remember, again, going back to my previous experience, that we actually had, we spun up a committee. That kind of handled, looked at pricing and taste or actual work, there was taste testing the companies broad and safe and stuff. And if, once the timing works out, it could be a worthwhile endeavor as well.
At the high school, which was part of the other issue is that the director last year, um, just couldn't get motivated to get it really going and. And so, um.
Couldn't get more of it to get a lot going.
Really getting people interested in the food, I mean, it was a matter of taking things out of a frozen bag and popping them in an oven. And again, you know, Ian said, I mean, the, I mean, you're gonna go get fresh. Chicken tenders across.
Not to dig on the co-op, the club isn't known for being cheap either.
Paid the same or the, or more, the, the quality that they were getting, and we've heard this by others, students and staff. It just was better.
Uh, when I taught here for a brief stint four years ago, the food was great, yeah, and it was reasonable and healthy, and so I don't know what shifted. Just four years, but I mean, feedback for the company if you're listening. It was great and, and there were lines and it was quick and it was, yeah.
So just, um, another idea for gathering data about this is having accidentally once shopped. At the co-op at ten AM or like between ten and twelve, don't ever do that because you get caught in line. Behind students who are literally buying one slice of turkey, one slice of cheese and a bagel. And then they have to be rung out individually, they have to be served at the deli counter individually. But I think it would be worthwhile to sit there and watch what they are purchasing. Because you're gonna get really good ideas of what they're looking for, um, and I think what it is, is they can go à la carte. You know, they can get exactly what they want, how they want it, and again, the cost. Was cheaper, um, my son who played hockey was hungry after hockey, no matter how much he ate before hockey or after hockey. And bought a lot of the breakfast sandwiches here and they were about twice the cost. Of if he could have run across to the co-op and gotten that, gotten this exact same sandwich, um, so.
So I, I am hearing that there was a healthy appetite part in the bond for a more detailed planned food. I think at the next, well, we can be here all night, we don't want. So I, I think that I'll, that's up with the next resident agenda planning and, and perhaps, and the ministry, ministry has let us know this is also an issue at MCS and Ray. And we will bring it back for a planned, they have hard numbers that we can move forth on. Moving back, that was a, Teresa, anything else on the VA report? Okay, and so there was a last minute conversation about the need for a non-public. So I think we'll wait on the personnel issue, if you feel that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the, the other thing. All right, there's no need for a non-public. So now we are back, we have a second opportunity for public comment, I get that we have members of the public here and online. Anyone wish to chime in, raise your hand in person or virtually? Yes, so same as before, back to the mic. Um, your name, if you're representing any particular group, and then three minutes.
Janice from Hanover, I would be very interested in hearing any conversations you might have. On the use of AI here and how you all are implementing it.
So that is a great question. We actually have policies working on that eventually. We did a survey of the parents regarding their thoughts on AI use that had almost six hundred responses. And that information is available to board members and will be available to the public within a matter of weeks. And the parents have many thoughts on AI, on some of the directions that I was not anticipating. And they were very thoughtful and well put, we've heard similar things from the students and the schools are awaiting a policy. And some of them are leading forward on their own school policies as well. But it is at our attention and it's rightfully so, it's a great time.
And you'll maybe be reporting on that.
A great question. Any, anything else from the public? Right, seeing, if you have any, any topics for the next meeting, besides what we already talked about tonight, please send them on to me. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn while we wait for our next meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, Deb?
I move to adjourn at nine oh sixteen.
Second by Michael, uh, going around the horn, starting with Neil. And Kenny, yes, we are adjourned, thank you everyone, we'll see you soon.